Couples meeting to order and stand for the pledge if you please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, amendments to the agenda. Moving right along. Approval of minutes of November 19th. Slow moved as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Additions, deletions, corrections, anybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We will have the CAI presentation about digital mapping. You're on, sir.
Franco, have you met my replacement in Northwood yet?
No, Tim has though.
Yeah, how's she doing, do we know?
Um, I really don't know. Haven't had real much direct contact. I'm trying to move this forward and make that a little smaller. Does that work? Okay.
Excuse me.
What the heck is that? I have no idea what that is. And I don't care about that. Is that... Legible to everybody? So, first of all, thank you for all coming to come and talk about this. Last year, the town invested in conversion, actually taking advantage of the of the state program that had already converted some of the maps and finished the conversion of the property maps so that all of the data are within G I S format, meeting the Mont Level 1 standards. So, as a result now, you have full G I S digital data from which that from which all your tax maps going forward will be generated. What I'm here to talk about this evening, unless there are other questions, is how can the town now capitalize on using that, those data? Making data available to the public as well as internal functions more efficient. Our solution to that is a web-based G I S solution. I'm not sure what everyone's background is and who knows what anyone knows what G I S is, but move me along whenever you want. G I S is a geographic information system and in simplest terms, really, it means you're just linking graphic data, in your case, your tax map data, to tabular data, which is your grand list. Linking those two sets of disparate data together, making them intelligent maps that you can now query, you can attach data to, and you can disseminate information. We go with a web-based solution because it requires no town, no investment in the town in hardware, software of any kind. If you have access to the internet, you have access to the data, should you choose to make it so. Everything I'm going to show you tonight, unless there are any specific questions that caused me to go to a staff site, which is password protected, everything I'm going to show you, we're in a public, going into these clients' public sites. Not only am I anything canned here, we're going to be live looking at other towns' data and how they're using it. As you can see, there are 350 communities, local, regional government agencies using this solution. Forty-five in Vermont. Some right in their area, I'm thinking Mendon, Proctor, Killington. We just released it, it's under password protection because we just released it today, as a matter of fact. So, there's a period of time where they review it and decide if there's changes they want to make before they open it to the public. But we can go to any of these sites and start using the data. And I think, my experience is, the best thing to do is just dive in, unless there's some general questions, the best thing to do is just dive in and start showing what the functionality is. Are there any other general questions right now? Is there preferences to which site to go to? Okay, well, let's just go, Proctor's the closest one, right?
Or Paulette.
Or Paulette, well, let's go to Paulette then. So, now it's open up, you'll see when you go from site to site, they're all, they all look the same. It's just, it's the same technology, it's just different data. Okay? So, there's the map of Paulette. Over on the left is where you interact with your assessment data. You can search for parcels. You can search by street name, by owner name, or by parcel number. I mean, for the most part, people don't know their parcel number, so people are looking at by address or name. Do you know anybody in Paulette? There's always a Smith, I bet.
How about Judy Coolidge?
Want to look up Coolidge?
Yeah.
There it is, Alton Judith. Looks like they own three lots. This is the one with their house on it. You see, so they have photos of their, the houses in their assessment database. So, if you have that, the same thing would be shown in your site. So, there's the site I'm looking for, I click on it, and it zooms right to the parcel. You notice, as I said, they own multiple parcels. So, when I select it, it shows of the other parcels that they also own, okay? This is where you can see assessment data. So, I can look at a summary property record card. This is just a summary card. It's not the property record card you'd get if you came into the town office. You can link those as well, and I can show you sites that do that. But this is just a summary that we provide with the fields that they chose to include in this, in this property record card. As well as their sketches, okay? So... We also have the, their building, you can go right to the building photo and building sketches that you see there. It's just a quicker way, not having to open the property record card if all you want to do is just see the sketches. Assessment data, it's broken up into their different tabs with different fields. That's really done so that the list under assessment doesn't get too long. So, if you want to look at just the land data or the, or the building data on that parcel. And this is all the public information that's coming right out of their assessment database, okay? So, I've selected a parcel, I found a parcel. Let's say I want to do a butters list. So, I click here. What are our butters here? Is it direct to butters typically, or do you have a distance you have to use? Or does it depend on what the situation is?
Do we go across the road for butters?
Yeah, direct usually means directly across the road too. Okay, so, our solution to direct to butters is to enter zero. Now, you could enter a distance. This is a good example. You could say, some solutions you might say, okay, enter 50 feet, so you get across the road. But if I do that, you see that 50 foot, well, I didn't even get across the road, so enter 60 feet. If I do that, you see, it selects other parcels that wouldn't otherwise be selected, right? So, our solution is, enter zero, and you get the direct to butters. And you also have this add/remove tool. So, you notice it zooms, it zooms in and out depending on what you've selected. But if I want to add the ones directly across the street, I'm going to say, I want that one, and I want that one. So, now, I've selected the parcels, I can get a report. And you notice it's just point and click. There's a subject parcel, there's the report. I can export that report to Excel, I can also do mailing labels. I started my sheet here, I need to start printing there because I've already used all those labels up. And now I have my mailing labels. So, within seconds, you've got that done, which otherwise takes some time. Now, in this case, you're in the middle of a, kind of a condensed area. Sometimes you're trying to do a butters list for a parcel that goes over four maps. That can take a lot of time manually to do that. In the G I S, there's no such thing as map borders. It's one big composite. For all I know, four maps come together right here. Doesn't matter. So, very quick and easy, a butters list. I'm going to clear that out. I'm going fairly fast, I don't want to take up too much of your time, so just slow me down whenever you want, or speed me up whenever you want to. Layers. Different towns have different layers. So, in this case, they've got their contours, their flood map, their wetlands, soil map. And then there's all kinds of Regional Planning Commission data that's there. I'm going to go to flood map because that's typically, all, you know, towns want to see that. So, now, for the first time, you can easily see how FEMA flood data affects specific parcels because they're easily overlaid directly on your mapping. So, you can see, you know, where the limits are. And you can also drill down and see what those things mean. So, that green is the 500-year, that diagonal hash, left to right is 100-year, and left to right going up is, or right to left going down is 100 years on A E. So, you can imagine, any of these layers can be turned on. They can be actually turned on at the same time, too. So, if I want to turn on contour data, it's a little tough to see, you saw the numbers come up. The color's a little light. But it's just, again, point and click. There's no limit to the layers you can have on here as well.
Who updates the FEMA information? You guys do that?
Yeah, so, as we do, well, not as it comes up. Every year, when we do the annual maintenance of the maps, we refresh the parcel data online, we check to see if there's more current data available.
So, is this a standard package with everything in it? Or do you buy a standard package and say, I want this layer, this layer, this layer? And you pay additional for the layers?
No, there's one fee regardless of how many layers. But you do decide which layers you want to show. Not all towns have all the same layers available to them. So, we spend some time working with whomever is the liaison with the town to determine, okay, these are layers we can find, which ones do you want to show? You may have a project done specifically for Fairhaven. Maybe the Regional Planning Commission did a project resulting in some maps that you want to add those layers in. There's no charge. Further, every year, if you have a new layer created and you want to add it, as long as we add it when we do the update, once a year, there's no charge to add that information.
Does it show, in the soil map, you show wetlands?
Separate wetlands.
Well, there's a National Wetlands Inventory data.
Oh, there you go.
Got some popped up up here. And the soil map, that's going to get a, be a colored mess with all this stuff on, probably. Yeah, there you go. So, now you're overlaying a whole bunch of different colors, it's going to be hard to tell. So, in some cases, it makes sense to overlay it together, and some it doesn't.
Now, does this have the ability, like, I think of Board of Civil Authority, you're looking for comparables for tax purposes, can I get comparables on this?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. The answer is yes, but not with the standard package, right? Well, we have, we have a, the advanced query functionality. There's, I think it's $800 for the advanced query functionality. That allows you, all these comparables that you can do within your Kama and your assessment data, you can do them here and it'll map it for you. A good example, in Littleton, we were looking for a dog park. They knew they needed two and a half acres, they knew they needed served by water, they knew all these different criteria, so that you can query that information. And then you've got scattering of parcels that fit that criteria, those criteria.
So, you could map our sewer and water system into this as well?
Yes.
Which ones are fed and take care of what?
Yeah, so, do you, have, I think your map, your water and sewers already been mapped. Wasn't it years ago that someone mapped your water and sewer here? Do you have digital mapping for that?
You'd have to ask our town board.
Well, if the, if the mapping exists, if the mapping exists, then we add it, it's just another layer.
Oh, that's, okay, cool.
If you need help mapping it, we can do that too. Of course, that's an extra cost, and I don't know what that is because we have to see what the system is.
Yeah.
But something, like, something tells me, like, 10 years ago, your water department was doing something, at least the water was being mapped. And they were added? Oh, okay, okay.
We've got some stuff that, oh, for the hydraulics. Water side, they've got a base map.
Maybe there's. Was that 800 per year or 800 one time?
For the stat, for the advanced queries? That is a... I should have looked that up. It's a, it's a new release, advanced queries. I'm pretty sure the advanced queries is 800 a year. Yeah, no, I'm positive it is. There's no setup fee, but there's an $800 a year additional cost for that service. So, there's also other tools available, too. So, for example, I want to calculate the area of this parcel that's within the flood zone. You don't even have to know anything about G I S. I click on that, I click on area, I point and click. I'm not going to be careful now, but all you do is click around the parcel. I said, click around the parcel. And .2 acres of that, .41, is within the flood zone. So, there's E, you can, there's measure tools, feet, you can change it to other measuring, since you can also change that to square feet. Well, kilometers too, but I don't know, you probably won't need that very often. There's also base mapping. Let me turn this flood zone off. So... Because we're an Esri business partner, this is built with Esri technology, all of this Esri imagery is available at no additional charge. So, that's just aerial imagery from Esri. There's also local, which is a bit of a misnomer. That's really the state imagery. The most recent, I guess this is the most recent available for here. That's the state imagery. And of course, the imagery that everyone's familiar with is Google. It's usually the best, too. So, you can, and you can look at, so then, a great advantage to this system too now is that you can also look at, for the first time, easily look at the parcels with the imagery in the background. And what is, and what is it, why do I really like that? Because you've got a bunch of eyes looking at it. Look at that. That's probably not correct. That line probably doesn't go right through that.
It might.
It could, it could, but that's, but it fills up a red flag. So, someone can look at that and say, hey, I think there's something wrong with the maps. Provide us with the data. As part of your maintenance service, we review questions and problems. The problem is, when you were looking at this map with no imagery, how the heck do you know? You don't know that there's an issue. But now, we do, whoops. Now we do. So, you can provide those data to us, we'll review it and make any corrections necessary. That way, the maps themselves are getting better and better all the time. Not just through new surveys and subdivisions that they have been for years, but also through reviewing and corrections like this. So, that's why I like seeing them. Some people don't like seeing it because they don't want to point out that it's actually really pretty nice. They line up pretty good. Okay?
Now, what's the, this database here? I'm sure there's protections to make sure someone like myself doesn't go in there, mess something along the way here. But is this backed up on a regular basis?
Everything's host, first of all, we're not looking at your live data, right? The source data and the mapping, we maintain for you, and we post it up there. The assessment data that are linked, that's, it's an export of the NEMRIC database that's up there, not the NEMRIC database. So, no one, even if they could hack it, can't hack it than hack the source data, okay? This is hosted, all hosted on Amazon, and it's backed up regularly. I don't know how often, way more than daily. They're just constantly backing that information up. So, let me continue on with other tools. Oh, I want, before I do that, I wanted to show you another option. Mendon, you'll see, it's the same thing. This is their, again, going into their public site. I just want to show you how they show, what they use for their property record cards. I don't know if you know anybody in Mendon, but I know there's a Smith. So, let's go to this one. They use, NEMRIC has a service they provide to towns for, I don't remember exactly how much it costs, a few hundred dollars a year. They'll host your property record cards, all right? So, we link directly to that site. So, we just feed data back and forth, okay? And there's no extra charge on our part, so instead of having, let me just, instead of having just the COI property card, which they have no data, and I don't know why, don't just take it down, this is the NEMRIC service that it's linking to. More and more towns are going to that solution. Now, you can also host your property, the actual property record cards that you have here. So, let me look at, I think Highgate does that. So, that's the property record card. And you see, that's the actual card they would get if they came into the town office. And that's what they wanted to show. Okay, so, as long, but as long as you can produce those cards, they'll link, we'll link whichever you want or multiples, and there's no additional cost for them as part of the standard service. And we'll update them once a year. So, every year, you have your new values and your new cards, produce new PDFs, and we'll link them for you. Okay? Just wanted to show you those examples before I move on. Or where we Paulette. We have, so there's simple-to-use drawing tools. Let's see. Oh, by the way. You'll notice, I'm going to show you this before I leave the layers. As I zoom out, different data are shown. So, if I zoom out far enough, all the tax map data are there, now they're gone. Those are simply zoom thresholds that are set up, depending on how far you're zoomed in. But there might be situations where you want all the tax map data on when you're looking at this map. So, in the layers, you have full control, and you can turn on tax map text visible at all scales. You turn that on, and now your tax map text is still there. I'll turn those photos off, it's easier to see. There's also simple-to-use, whoops, drawing tools. Point and click. So, if I say, I want to create a point, I'm going to put, I want it to be red. And I'm going to put it right here. And then I want to put some text in right here. And then I'm going to put, broken culvert. I want that text to be red. Put an arrow here. Right there. And now I'm going to print that PDF, I'm going to send it to my road agent. They've got to go out and check it out, there's a problem in that area, I don't know. One of our Massachusetts clients used those tools. They were having their 250 years. And they created a map that they posted on their website. They use these tools to create the map and put points of interest along it. So, they're just, they're very, again, they're just point and click, and you can't, you know, you can't break anything. If you, if you get in trouble, you just close it and restart it. Okay? Another good thing I want to show you, I'm going to turn this off. I'm going to turn the zone, the flood map on. What's going on here? So, I have the flood map on, I'm talking to someone on the phone. I want them to see exactly what I'm looking at, right? So, I hit the share button. All right. Let's copy that link. Why isn't it coming up? Let's see if it's the site, I'm going to go to Highgate. Do the same thing here. Oh, I worked there, I don't know what's going on. So, I copy that, I go to my email, I compose an email, I put that, I paste that into my body, I send that, they click on it, and it opens up the site with exactly what I'm looking at, the same layers. Everything's the same. So, you know everybody's talking about the same thing. This I, I'm going to go back to Paulette. This I tool, of course, if you click on a parcel, it gives you the information. But if you hover over it, it gives you the basic information about it. You don't have to click and open the parcel up to see what that information is. Zoom in, zoom out. Zoom to my location. Not a lot of value here while you're sitting at a computer, but this runs on your mobile device and tablets. So, if you're out in the field and you hit that button, it's going to zoom to right where you're standing. And then you can check out the parcels around you, the information on those around you. Zoom to the extents. Zoom to my last view. This is, you've seen, making a box to zoom in. Oh, we also have built-in street view. Has everybody used, has everybody used Google Street View before? So, it's built right into the system. And you can see that arrow showing you which way you're looking. You don't have to go and open another site. You can go up the street, and it's showing you where you're moving down here, the blue arrow. If I'm turning and looking around, the arrow's turning, showing you what direction you're looking. So, now Google Street View is available to you without leaving your site.
I see flood plains, flood, the flood map layer is on, but what about wetlands?
Yep, I'll turn that off, and I'll turn on the wetlands. This is the National Wetlands Inventory layer. Looks like it's limited in this area I'm looking at. So, it's the National Wetlands Inventory. We do have some clients that have actually hired soil scientists to do wetland studies in different parts of their community. So, if you've done that, we can add that as a layer as well. But whatever is available digitally can be added in.
So, when I'm looking at this, like, if we were talking about a paving schedule, could I use, even though this is the tax map, could I look at all the streets and click on a street and say, it's so many feet? And I can figure out what it would cost me to pave five streets, for example?
Yeah, so, you're looking at, you know, like an R S M S-type software that allows you to do that. This is not meant to supplant that, but you can do that kind of stuff. And let me show you, I think Molten Barrel actually did that. And let me show you... I think Moltenbowl actually did that. I think it's Moltenbowl. Oh, by the way, so they have a splash screen that comes up. This is customizable. Some towns have them, some towns don't. You've noticed the ones we've gone to so far have not. So you can have that if you choose to. But I think they have... Oh, you know what? I'm gonna go into their staff site. I think it's in... So what's also available is a staff site. So this would be tools and data that you want available to municipal staff that you don't want the public to see. So I'm signing in as a staff member and you see the staff layers now? RSMS data. So if I turn that on, so now they've got all the information about each of their streets that's in their RSMS data. So if I click on that, I get that parcel, of course, but if I use this arrow, parcel lines, parcel lines, parcel lines, I'm clicking through, waiting to get that. Maybe that was... There's the RSMS. So there's the data on that street. It does not take it the next step and have the calculation capabilities automatically to tell you what it's gonna cost you to pave that street. But it gives you the distance and you can calculate.
You can calculate that now. I'm just thinking, having one system that does it all.
Yeah. Well, I think that's a good point and this isn't intended to be a system that does every aspect of your, you know, your public works. It isn't gonna take the place of a public works software, management software, but it's a central repository for all the data. So you know that when you have it, you can incorporate it so that you know where it is and what it is. So you saw their additional tools come up when you get into a staff site too. So for example, here, I want generate... Is this thing being used at all? Last 90 days, generate analytics. So select... I want to know, what are we paying for? Is anybody using it? And it gives you the analytics about it. So it gives you, in the last 90 days, all the page views, when's day's been the busiest day? You can see it's getting a lot of activity. It tells you what devices, mostly desktop, but some mobile and tablet. Mostly Chrome, some using Safari Edge and others. So there's that analytics. It also provides you with the ability... So whenever you link your Kama to your maps, there's gonna be what we refer to as link errors. Records in your Kama that didn't link to the map, records in your map... Parcels that didn't get a link in your Kama. So that's a really good tool to use to clean up your data and find out where there's problems. So in their case, I can run Kama not in GIS. So these are all their records that are in their Kama that don't have a corresponding link. Every town has some. There's gonna be some for various reasons. There's 169 out of over almost 7,500 parcels that aren't linking. Some of those are private roads that don't have a record in their Kama, right? So because they're being assessed with all the properties. Some of them may be, maybe, you know, personal property that doesn't have a corresponding Back in Pollitt, I showed you that. I don't know if you've noticed down here, it's showing the coordinates as I move my cursor around, it's giving me the coordinates. You have the ability to change your coordinate system. State plane... I keep forgetting from state to state, if Vermont is state plane feet or meters, the standard, but I wanna say it's state plane feet, but it could be meters. Anyways, you can change that. Also, feedback, this is important. So you can... Anybody can send us feedback. Have a problem, have a question, send it to us for review. Help. I can do a feature tour and it just takes me step by step through each of the tools. Or I can... This is a PDF documenting it. So you can... I couldn't remember how to do it on a butters list, so I go to here, I click on a butters, takes me right to that step with images and shows you how to do it. Last thing you want... First of all, it's very intuitive, so once you start playing with it, you figure it out. But the last thing you want is the public calling up, because this is gonna... Should reduce your interruptions in the office. People shouldn't be calling for copies of maps, copies of tax cards, et cetera. But the last thing you want from the two is call you and say, hey, how do I do it on a butters list? The disclaimer like you have on your tax maps about, and then there's contact information up here for the town. So I very quickly went through this stuff. I... Again, I know you have a regular meeting to deal with. There are additional... Everything I showed you, except when I went into Moltenbowl's staff site, is the standard, public-facing, access GIS site. Different data can be on there, but the functionality and the tools that are available is the standard package. We also have editing tools. Those are driven primarily by Public Works, Water Sewer. They wanna manage their inventory, their features. They replace the pipe, they wanna enter the new width of the new pipe or the material, et cetera. Those editing tools are available. There's document upload tool. This would require a staff site. I'm just gonna show you an example. Littleton... I'm gonna go to Littleton just because I know off the top of my head, one to go to. Littleton doesn't use a permitting software. Do you use permitting software here? Are you a paper system for building permits? Yeah. So Littleton's the same way and most small communities are. So what they've done, they use our document upload tool. Before they disappeared. So if I... We have a... A document upload tool allows you to link whatever you want to a parcel. So in this case, I know there's a building permit here. You'll see they've got building permits, they've got the property record card, the building photos, they got their permits. So they simply scan and link them using that document upload tool. Again, a place to go, a central repository for all this information. They actually have also linked all their surveys. So you can see what survey was used to compile that parcel. So there's that document upload functionality that can be of value too. But you have to have a staff site for that because you can imagine if the public had access to that, what would get linked? The property card, okay? Like anything else. If I log in now... And I select that parcel, you see now there's floor plans and pictometers. So if I click on that... So you didn't even see that before. Once I'm logged in, that little lock shows you, there's the floor plan to the school. So their police and fire went around and got these floor plans to the major buildings in town and they have it in there. Because it runs on their mobile devices, it's part of their, you know, should there be a, you know, a school shooting or something? It's part of their response plan. Side A, D, C, and D means something in their response plan and it's available to everybody on the fly. So there's... Again, there's value to every department. Many of our clients, the planning board or conservation commissions, they have this site up through their whole meeting because virtually everything they do is geographically based in one manner or another. I neglected to show you one thing and I'll be the last thing unless there's other questions. The print functionality. I'm gonna turn on the flood map. So... Looking at this map. What's going on? So now I've zoomed into this flood map area and I wanna print this map. So I can do a quick, just a print, it's like a photocopy of the map, right? Print PDF, relatively quick. And that's it. It was just a print of what you were looking at. I can also go in and say, okay, I want it to be landscape, I want it to be 150 feet to the inch. I'm gonna title it Test and I wanna show my legend. And this box is showing you what I'm looking at, right? So I can move around and say that's not the area I wanted to catch, but let's just say it is. I print the PDF. Now, this is gonna take a little bit longer because it's actually putting together a, you know, a final, you know, professional-looking map as opposed to just a photocopy. Print that. So you see it has their logo, has the title I put in there. Oops, I didn't... I must not have entered the scale. I must not have hit Enter after I hit the scale. And you can see there's a legend down here to show you what those items mean on your Okay? You wasted enough of your time?
Was that you're... That this is available to me on my computer at home after it's installed? I can look up my own...
Yep. Anything you looked at is... There are live sites, public information, so everything you looked at, you can go to. Are there any questions? Somebody's gonna ask me what it costs.
Consider ask.
Okay, so there is a one-time setup fee for the service and that's $3,000. That regardless of the number of layers, as I said. One thing I left off too, we deliver a data processor with it too. So as the listeners are updating their database, Smith, Soltar, Jones, they run the data processor, your web is always as current as you want it to be. Complete control locally. So that $3,000 includes setting up the site, as many layers as you want, whatever's available, as well as building that data processor for that updating of the site, okay? The annual service is $3,000. So the first year is six and then it's $3,000 a year thereafter. That doesn't include a staff site. The staff site... And I can provide a formal proposal for any or all of this if you want. Staff site is a one-time setup fee of $950. It does not increase your annual costs at all. We talked about the advanced queries is $800 a year. There's no upfront cost, but it's $800 a year for that service. But the basic, really what typically when towns get up and running, the first thing they do is the public site. Oftentimes a staff site, but not necessarily. The only other thing that some towns do upfront right away is the document upload tool, which of course requires a staff site.
Is there some minimum server requirements for us at the town site?
Well, you won't have to buy any software. There's no hardware or software costs for you at all. We take care of all of that. All you need is internet access and you have access to the data.
Other questions?
As I showed you, we talked about list, you can see towns as small as... I think probably our smallest client is Land Grove, Vermont. I think they have like 147 parcels to, you know, the city of Everett, Massachusetts. There's applications for small and large communities all the way through.
It's essentially the same. I mean, Land Grove paying $3,000.
Yeah, unfortunately, that $3,000 is the bottom.
They can afford it.
Yeah. Well, so can a lot of towns, but it's population-based, but it doesn't go up until you've hit 20,000 populations. So virtually all of Vermont is at that level.
Well, we got something to discuss now.
Okay. Do you want me to follow this up with any type of proposal or anything? Or wait to hear on...
Let us... Yeah, let Joe talk to you and we'll talk to Joe.
Sounds good. Thank you.
These guys don't have any... You guys don't have any questions right now?
No. We've met with... We're big supporters of progress.
Somehow I didn't doubt that.
Which levels did you...
Want it all, right?
You know, go big or go home, Jim.
Oh, good.
Why'd you even have to ask?
Right, it was a silly question.
Well, I really wouldn't, you know, I would really wouldn't recommend all of it right now. I don't think it's in your best interest to spend money on things like the editing tools and all that because you're...
You're not ready.
You need to know how you're gonna use it before you start buying that, those additional I would say probably half of our clients, when they first fire it up, go with simply the $3,000 setup, the $3,000 a year service and then add on the staff site for following or something like that. But more and more, the other half go right into the staff site because they see applications for it right away and they want those tools. There's a lot more. I was intentionally trying to be, not take up too much of your meetings, I know I already have, but there's significantly more functionality there that once, if you did go forward with it and set up, we would come and go through the whole system all the way through, hopefully with members of all departments, so you can see how I can use it.
Absolutely.
I'll be out of your way in two seconds.
No problem. Appreciate you taking the time.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. Moving right along. Five minutes for public comment. Guess not. Department head reports. Your honor.
Okay, keeping it brief. Jenny and I are both working with USDA and Wayne to finish up that wastewater plant application for the loan. The warning, I have a draft for the warning. It was sitting in front of the... I'm sitting on the table with you guys. The 17 through 20 will be the ones that the board will have a lot of say in, everything else's petition warnings. That's coming up, to talk about that at the next meeting. And tech... Oh, not tech sales yet. So there's one of those sitting in front of you two. The funds were released to do the town hall refurbishment with the elevator and the heating and the everything. We'll start moving forward on that. We'll have a loan application for the fuel tank replacement at the next meeting. That's $20,000. And tech sales, we'll have tech sales January 9th. We have five on the docket for next month, January. And that's what I got for it.
Going back for the engineering assessment numbers. Why is the elevator in there twice?
It's the third item now. Auditorium and elevator and then the elevator cost.
So the elevator, auditorium and elevator, we have to put in a shaft and we have to do some demo work and then we actually have to buy an elevator. It's two separate pieces. There's the construction of the space and then... There's the construction of the space and then the installation of the piece.
You're telling me that the building the shaft is more than what the elevator is?
Well, the auditorium and elevator, that's like refurbishing the upstairs and doing the floors and the walls and a million different things. In the, uh, on the attached paper, there's a breakdown of everything that the engineer decided they thought we needed.
Is this an application?
Information.
That's just information.
So we're still at a, at a, like it said, a la carte, as it said someplace in here. We're still at that point. Or this is what we're, we're plenty to do.
A lot of this is what the engineer, I mean, it was refurbished the downstairs bathrooms, install new bathrooms upstairs. I mean, this is, this is everything that, to make it, you know, the shining example of auditoriums. We don't have the money to do that. So, um...
Good. Not good, but I mean, good that we recognize that.
Yeah, no, we'll focus on the heating system, the elevator. The heating system, elevator, and then we do need to make the bathrooms upstairs ADA compliant for the grant agreement. But other than that, in addition to that, whatever the board wants. It's gonna be a tight squeeze.
So what's the next step for us, actually? To actually choose what we think we can do?
Um, it's, yeah, I guess. I was gonna start by getting some numbers for elevator installation. And then the work upstairs to make that ADA compliant. I have, I forget the gentleman's name that does our furnace work.
Craig Roberts?
Mr. Roberts. I have him giving me a quote for the furnace, just for a ballpark. That's gonna have to be bid up too, though.
Yeah.
So...
So he's just gonna do ballpark and get an idea and put together specs?
Yep. Yeah, if the board's happy with that, we can start chugging along.
Incentives, I guess, for the budget, right? And I have to find out what it's gonna cost someday.
Yep.
Yep. Let's find out.
Yep, with that, I'll start, I'll probably next week.
That it?
That's it.
Questions for the town manager?
No.
You got any communications or anything? Okay. All business would be the police union contract?
Yep, so the police union did approve the contract. These are not signed, but they sent me an email saying they did vote and they did approve it. When the board signs this, they'll sign it and then we'll get hard copies.
We already did.
You already, you already.
We already accepted it a while back.
And this grant, this union contract starts December 1st. To, what is it, June, June 30th, '22.
I voted not to sign it. Because I think it's a slap in the face to the board here because we negotiated a union contract with them and then they went behind everybody's back and did this. How did they go behind you each back? At that part, I don't think.
They knew when we were going, our contractor doing this, so they should've said something about it then.
I'm, not that I'm not thrilled about having another union to deal with, but I'm, you know, anybody can do, unionize anytime they want.
Right. And we shouldn't have went through the negotiation, we'd get the union board.
I know what you're saying, I just, they can do it. Unfortunately. So, we should see that signed by them shortly?
Yep.
All right, uh... Moving right along. Budget review. Town clerk is page two.
Election unit page one.
Oh, I'm sorry, election unit page one. Sorry, my bad. Highlights, you got?
I know the election salary is down.
Why?
It's not down, it's up. We have reelections now.
$1,400, it's up.
Presidential primary, town meeting, well, that's in this budget.
Election unit.
Primary, general, and then another town meeting.
And we have a bond vote that's supposed to be town meeting?
For the school, that's rumor has it, yes.
Rumor has.
Can we budget for that?
Yes, by us.
So that's okay.
That's good.
Well, we still.
Our workers. And then, hopefully this year, we're able to count. They're gonna have the same type of ballots as we do.
Okay. Well, that would make a big, big help, wouldn't it?
Okay. Questions for the election unit?
No.
What's up because of the number of votes?
Okay. All right, town treasurer. Page one as well.
The town treasurer, that is the, yeah, that's the regular.
Increase.
Increase.
Right. Questions, comments? Listers?
60.01, the reason for that is this tax mapping that's going on?
Yes.
No, guys, is that for the setup of the GIS or was that something?
That was, I put that in for the yearly contract. The setup service would, in our discussion, the setup service would come from our surplus for equipment account. So that would be that one-time $3,000.
Where's that coming?
Come from the lister's surplus, surplus account of equipment.
So the 26 needs to go through?
That's from the state. That's from the state. The state pays us, the state pays us, um, two, two separate fees. One for, I'm sorry, my words are escaping me. One fee per parcel for maintenance, and then the other for a reappraisal. So the $3,000 would come through the maintenance account.
So that would be the setup and then the, then the $3,000 would just be, we would... And that reflects in the $4,800?
Correct. And because of differing, we're not having CAI read every single one of the deeds property transfers, so that traditional mapping services fee went down to $1,800 a year. It was $2,200.
How many are you gonna read?
They only, they, we're only gonna send them things that affect boundaries. So if there was a survey that came in, they will read those. Historically, we have sent them everything.
Every single.
Everything. And Judy always packaged them up and mailed them in. Last year, we started faxing them, you know, scanning them in and emailing them. Talking to Franco, he says, we don't really need them. So we've only, we've decided, we've read enough, we've made a change because there's always a survey with a change. If there's a survey, we send it down. If there's a question, if we're looking at the two and they don't jive, we send those down. They don't charge us extra for those little things, but we're, we're not gonna just send them every single thing.
Okay, I'm not seeing where, is it all included, the tax mapping, the $1,800? It's all, okay. Okay, and it, and additional 26.
It would be three if they did that.
Right, it's up 26. Okay, okay.
It would be three plus the...
All right.
Yes. We're trying to save the town a little money by not sending them everything, every single thing. We have the capability in that prog, of the program that we have that we've never used. So we're trying to educate ourselves so that we can use it and save the town, you know, if I'm here, it's done here.
Good. Well, for that.
Is it your intention to upload all the lister's cards and?
We'd like to. You know, I mean, we spend a lot of our time answering phones or having people come in and hand them lister's cards. And if they had the ability to not bother us, it would save us an awful lot of time. Or at least, and, and they call and you say, we don't do that, we don't, we don't fax them, we don't email them. You're gonna have to come in. And then you fight with them and then they still have to come in.
And then they call us.
Yeah, and then. So, you know, if they could just look it up, would that be much nicer for all of us?
As long as you understand there are non-computer savvy people that you will still fight.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. You know, but to get three a week instead of five a day on a, you know, if things are busy, it's...
Yep. Yep. Questions? Moment?
Franco actually set up the GIS for Northland when I was there. And it helped them dramatically.
Well, you can see, you can see, I mean, it's a...
Especially for water's list, it was just fabulous to have.
So he's still gonna give us a proposal before we go ahead?
I think Joe's gonna talk to him and...
Take care of it.
Yes, the board's interested, because it's a yearly contract thing, so the board will just go.
Any other questions for the listers or questions on that? Then we will move on. Town clerk. Town page two as well. Thanks, guys. You can hang around, you know, you're more than welcome. I knew you would.
I'm gonna call in today. I was supposed to be at the, at the library helping Santa, but...
Does he need help?
Yes. Santa always needs help.
I think you can take the wheels off his sleigh now. Town clerk. The 781 is obviously the 2.25. Questions, comments? Because we're gonna move right along if we... Okay.
Just for the record, how we doing on updating the, digitizing the maps or whatever we're doing?
I contacted them and they're sending me a contract.
Okay. But you're scanning some books in, you're like...
Oh, I'm still scanning. I was scanning today, as much as I can.
And what are we up to?
Uh, 67, I'm at the back of 67.
Which means?
Which means 1998.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a lot, actually.
Well, yeah. Between that and the, between that and the lister's, or PIA, that's gonna be neat, be handy. Uh, okay, anybody have questions here?
Municipal planning?
No, I'm, I'm town clerk, I'm sorry. Everybody okay? I'm moving on. Planning commission?
Thank you.
Not coming up to $100 on the salary there. More time being spent doing that, or?
That's just, that's just a regular salary increase. Oh, wait a minute.
Looks like a...
That does look like a...
A pretty large percentage increase to the salary.
Hate to give people raises. Did what they did at Main Street. Be perfectly honest with you.
We gotta, we gotta get that back on our next agenda.
We're gonna talk about it tonight, too.
Oh, this is, uh, we increased the planning commission members by two. So you'll see an increase because they guessed like it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That was the large board, that answers that.
No.
So there's two new members?
And they get paid a hundred bucks.
Whether they need it or not.
I hope they're paid at Christmas time.
All right. Municipal zoning. Nice you dropped by.
Is that a by accident or choice?
No, that's by choice.
Just thought I'd ask.
Any highlights as long as you're here or just same?
It's the same hours I have put on the budgets. I mean, zoning is pared down to the hours, the placards that are required by state law to be posted. And now with the legal fees, no longer in the budget. It's just basically those, those two items. And my hours are estimated with what I spend, and they can be, be more, they can be less. So I try and have tried to put in what I think hopefully will cover my time doing zoning administration.
Just keep doing it like that, yeah?
Questions?
No.
That is municipal zoning. And ZBA is next.
We haven't had these changes that are...
No change.
Anybody good with that? Okay. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you for your time.
Like, you're, you're welcome to stay as well. Funny, nobody's taking me up on this, right? You got it.
I got two that I'm gonna touch on.
Okay. Emergency management is on full.
I don't have any questions there, pretty self-explanatory.
They still come and check that generator and that's what that is?
Once, once a year.
Okay.
Is that, do I think that's maintenance?
Not it. I think so, right? That's the service contract.
I think they charge it...
Right. It's, that's the annual, annual inspection service.
$1,600 from come check a generator?
It's expensive to get these things maintained, yeah. When I first got here, I actually...
Doesn't that include oil changes or any like that too, Jim? You know, so it's not just...
It's still, it's a chunk of change.
Right.
It really is. You said you, you looked around for...
One of the first things I did when I got here, I just kinda poked around to see if somebody could do it cheaper. And these folks are doing pretty good.
This is the generator at the school, right?
Yeah.
Why are we doing that? Why wouldn't we be doing it?
Actually, that's a very good question.
We don't own the building.
We don't own the building.
It's our generator, though.
Right.
We installed a generator.
Should we put it someplace else?
We installed it there for an emergency, as a backup, an emergency shelter.
I think they should be paying for it.
It's the only shelter we have that has power. And I believe they contributed, I think it was $25,000 worth of project. We got a grant to fund 50% of it. And, uh... The only emergency shelter that we have that has backup power.
Can we still use it now they've changed it?
It's still our shelter, but...
Yeah, it's our generator, sure.
No, can we still use the school? We don't own the school anymore.
Yeah, and so we can, we can.
I guess all those questions we should ask.
I think we should get something in there.
We do going forward with all of our shelters. What we do going forward with all of our shelters is to, to execute, remember as to understanding on covering that, just so we do have, have it in writing, but that's something that we actually, the district is working on, in a reciprocal manner, school district is working on that with their relocation shelters also.
Well, we should, we should actually do.
Yeah.
Actually find out what's going on there. Because who's in charge at that point? Well, I mean, when, when there's a, I mean, obviously, when there's an emergency situation, that it goes through the regular protocol, and it, I would assume that, you know, the school board and the school superintendent aren't the top of the list of the protocol anyway, so.
No, and they, what did we say, they were, were Red Cross suspected, it's been a while that needs to be revisited, but, uh, when they, when they were designated, so there was, there was no qualms about it at that point, and nobody's raising any, to my knowledge. So, we should be standing there.
Okay. All right. So, we'll move as we are, we should really make some effort there.
Yeah.
Constables, page five.
Morning. Hey, guys. I'm right in the corner. I think it says level funded from last year, I think was what we went in with.
We're minus sixteen point twenty-four percent.
Which is where are your minuses versus ours, 'cause I didn't get a printout of what the, what yours were. Oh, it's in the budget, great. Okay, I haven't gotten a copy, I wouldn't even. Page five. Okay, let me just take a look at that real quick, can we open that? I got the initials, but.
I think it represents actual, like, there's two hundred dollars down, two hundred dollars down from the salaries.
I think we try to, try to consistent where something is versus actual.
Yeah, meeting and training.
So, after twenty-five to twenty-three, based on spending. So, our actual was twenty-three thirty-five last year, so I'm disarmonizing this, because first time I've seen this, correct? Okay? Eighty, yeah. You dropped the eighty dollars on the supplies, right? Yep. I think that's a good idea, no problem with that. Four hundred on communications, correct? Total. Total, I'm just going down numbers in case something changed. Yep. Meetings and trainings, proposed twenty dollars. I don't know if that really, I'd rather leave it at least a hundred, in case there is something. Has it been used aggressively? No, in fairness, but I think that leads you to do just about nothing, but, you know, it's up to you, I guess that's one place that, wherever we think, or if we're going to use it, we can always come and play at the point of, we'd like to do this, what do you think about doing that? So, I guess that's not the end of the world. Travel, looks about right. Engineering equipment, looks about right, 'cause we, you can kinda find the ebbs and flows as, uh, equipment and stuff, and I don't think you're too far off. I guess the only one I would maybe go back is, if I was gonna put anything in, again, just seeing this now, I guess meetings and trainings, instead of twenty, I'd like to see it at a hundred. You know, if it's not next year, it's not being used, 'cause you, if you, trainings and meetings, you go to anything like an academy now, it can be, you know, thirty to fifty dollars by the time you, they tack the meal thing on it or whatever like that, so it doesn't really allow you to do much. That would be the only thing, other than that, I think you're right on spot, if that makes sense to you guys.
What's your point here, folks? Can we go back to a hundred on that?
Any questions? Any? Let's see what that does it for us.
I agree on everything else, though, okay?
Only eighty dollars, well, so.
Yeah.
Right, well, the thing is, we gave up the eighty on the supplies, too, never, that was something Sean wanted, but I don't think he ever accessed, I just borrow from Proctor accounting.
Doesn't change the bottom line, anyway, so.
Cool.
The fire department's got it.
We can borrow from them, too.
Yeah.
We, we have ways. Puppy eyes. Does that work? Does that work with the fire department?
It's a puppy eye?
Yes. Just have to know who to see.
Depends on the puppy, right?
Any other question on the constable stuff? You're all good.
Are you guys?
Yes.
So, we're up on, we're up eighty dollars on the, on the training?
From what he had, yep.
Okay.
Is this a copy I can keep, or is that gonna stay here? No, it's, I figured people don't just carry the budget in their pocket. No, I just, I hadn't seen this one, or had it, had it mailed to me yet, so I just wanna make sure.
Okay.
All right. Come on, move it on.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Can we talk about the warrant? I can, if you want, I didn't know when that falls into place, you, you do it now? I, I thought you were going to. I can, if you want, so, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so, switch hats for a second, I called Joe today as a representative of Fair Haven Rescue Squad, I was looking to get on the docket so they could discuss a warrant lined for proposing the budget, as we've done before. In the past, last couple of years, I think you guys have gone to having it put out to a petition, was, I think it's like eighty signatures and brought back to be put on the ballot. So, to kinda give you a little update where Fair Haven Rescue is at versus where they were, 'cause several of you, I don't know if you were the three in the corner, we're at the meeting, whatever. So, right now, we'll start with September to today, this, I'm not as prepared for this as I'd like to be, but thought maybe this would be a good way to present it and get it on the ballot. Um, started, they hired, uh, they got rid of the administrator, the board is the administrator, Amy Proctor is doing the accounting, that's been a positive, found some funds and stuff that maybe just follow through on internal billing and stuff like that. Fair Rescue has been continually solid as far as financially, because there is no debt, the building's paid for, the rigs are paid for, there's just constant normal everyday bills at this point, and they've stayed pretty true to that. With the increase of coverage, has been an increase of, you know, it's kind of an M and flow, you know, nobody's getting rich, but they're, you know, keeping things where they can start updating some things. It's gonna be a while on some other things, just based on economics. The one thing to kinda proudly bring up to you, I brought to Joe, thought was a very important point, you can see it if you want, I just wanted back, so this is December's schedule. As you can see, from like a little or nothing, it's looking to be pretty close to other than a couple of days that are still getting filled in twenty-four seven. So, you're not all the way there yet, but we're a long ways from where they were in September, and I think that's what I, we propose to you guys, that we would bring to you, based on you guys backing us up, and I think especially, you know, Jay and Bob and all those guys, and John were very good about that, when I said, this is where our goals are, I think they've met and exceeded, and hopefully can just do better. A lot of it's restructuring, the attitude is very good down there, the, there's, there's some newness, I mean, there's not gonna be a line about that, but there's some, the old guard has come back to help, which has helped a lot. There's a gentleman, Josh, from Virgens, is head of service right now, Liz is taking, they're kinda like a mutual role, but we still, the board is the administrator. So, in their last meeting last week, they're going over what to propose for budgets, you know, it's based on per cabin. Last year, I called Suzanne just to get accurate number on our warrant article, was fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars even. They discussed if, you know, increase, not increase, I brought the point to them, you have to prove yourself before you can change anything. You know, there is a cost of operating, and they've decided for this, especially this year, staying flat for, as last year's, with that increase, 'cause that was quite an increase. Had it, should have been done over the time, yes, but that's a prior administration, that's a mistake or whatever. So, I guess what I'm looking, and maybe Joe can more eloquently mouth the article, to have the select board put it on the ballot for the same amount as it was, as the article was written last year. Why I'm asking that, we can go around next year when it comes to petitions and stuff, if you wanna discuss that. I think the priority right now is they stepped up, we got people in the rigs, the priority's keeping that going. I think there was a bigger discord, and now Sean, you have approved, approved, yeah, approved him as a board member, he's been down there, starting to get interest, he has, he kinda, it kinda missed the actual meeting, so he's kinda new to the whole thing, but he's been, he came down, had a meeting with Liz Orr, the supervisor, and Amy today, and really kinda came up to space, so I guess I'm bringing this to you to ask you to put it on the ballot for the same amount as last year, as the article was read in last year's ballot. I tried to look out there and I couldn't find it, 'cause I wanted to say it more eloquently, but I apologize. Is there questions or anything, or does it make sense?
No, I think you've covered it pretty good.
We're trying to do it, but.
How much is actual coverage and how much is transport?
As far as. The primary goal is, I'll put the loose term of nine-one-one calls, your emergency calls are your primary, so if anybody's gonna be doing transport, it'll be a secondary crew. The only time that would maybe be a difference if there was something scheduled and there was a return trip or something, but the goal is to keep the truck in town as much as possible. Now, I'm not saying in a mutual aid situation, there is a lot of that, that does happen sometimes, ends up in Skeensboro, but Skeensboro's very good to us. There's a lot of reciprocation, you know, even the main, you take like regional ambulance, they've had to really change that, the, the call volumes are up, I mean, and unfortunately, the pool that you draw, the people that are certified and able to do this, has gotten smaller. You know, if you said to me, or like, I know John was on for years, if you said, hey, you wanna be an EMT, well, you gotta sign up for two-hundred, two-hundred twenty hours, it's a hard road to hoe, but the ones we have seem to be really dedicated, and we're actually.
Well, no, what I was, what I was, what I was asking, and I, I'm not making a judgment, I'm just.
Sure.
I know they were doing a lot of transports because they were moneymakers and they needed to make money, and I just wondered if you knew if there was, what the breakdown between actual calls were versus transport, not that it matters, but it's, it's, you know, people are seeing Skeensboro show up at their door.
Oh, it, it has been rough to the last three months, there's no denying that, it's only, it's getting better, you know, during the week especially, daytime during the week, some of it is vetting, you know, you come on as a, as a member of Fair Haven Rescue, you have to be background checked, you have to make your cards associated with the state. We have one that moved from Colorado, even though she's nationally certified, it still has to be vetted by the state that they are who they are. But I get what your point is, is where and how. Now that those people are off what they call on-the-job training, or OJT, they are already single, so you can have a two-person crew, you had at least what was an EMR, which is now, it used to be an ECA, basic learning, you know, a step above using the preceptor to EMT, but you can put those two as a crew and be a very, and an EMT and be a very accurate crew. I think in previous administration, they had pushed and gone down that road heavier on the transport stuff, and that was pulling the rig out of service while they're doing it. The current administration, they did a little bit of transport stuff, but the, the goal is probably if they're gonna be transports, they're looking at maybe setting it up, and this is definitely in the beginning stages, of being a Friday, 'cause a lot of times the hospital, excuse the expression, like to clean house, you know, send back to nursing homes, a lot of that, you gotta get pre-authorizations and stuff, but that would include having a second crew on, so your primary crew's in town, the ones answering emergency calls. If there is a day that there's two crews on and nobody's doing transport, I'm not saying they won't take some calls for somebody else to. Yeah, they're trying to do their best to balance that out, I think, and I get what your point, that it's like being here, we, we gotta take care of home first.
Would your report for the town report have a breakdown of what type of calls?
I think they're working on that, they're trying to get that, a little bit of this too, is why I'm bringing this, a little bit of blind signing, 'cause a lot of this was brought before, and like, you guys got to get this done, they're like, ooh, you know, it kinda, it snuck up on them, a little bit on it, like getting the stuff in and stuff, 'cause I know what, everything has to be in by January fifteenth-ish. So, we wanted to be ahead of the curve, that's why I'm bringing this to you now, and, you know, really, I think you guys have been more supportive, but if you can, can help us with that, I think it would be greatly appreciated, but I don't understand, you gotta do what you have to do.
So, we're not gonna see a petition, so that, that's the basic?
That's. I'm asking you to put an article on there, basically in loose language, asking for the same amount as last year, written as the same way the article was last year.
I got it typed in on my.
Yeah, I just.
Are you gonna set a, are you gonna set a precedent here, that everybody just wanna come to the board and ask to put it on without petition?
To a certain extent, but it's, it's, it's different.
No question.
I think it's, yeah, it's, it's a little bit.
It's not really a difference, because it's still an appropriation.
Right.
But it's also, if we don't have it.
Does the library put in for one, or do they just gotta put onto a select board?
That's one bit of town.
It's own, is it completely owned by town, but it's a separate entity, isn't it? Or is it fully owned by the town?
Yeah, you guys are a separate business, that part of it is.
I thought the library was separate, I didn't realize it was part of it.
No, it's part of the town.
Okay.
Be honest with you, I've always hated it.
I'm just asking a question, that's all.
I've always hated it, me and, the appropriation, I wish it wasn't very good.
And Jay has a very valid point, I understand with that, I'm just, I guess, asking for a little leniency on this one, if we have to come back next year and you say no, based on what's going on, it has to be dealt with.
Well, the way I look at it, the time is better spent taking care of the people with a rescue squad than it is spent on signatures on a petition.
John, how much would jobs that will get eighty names on a petition?
I don't know.
With very few people living in town, harder. I understand, I mean, you're all allowed to your opinions, that's why you're all here to bring different angles.
We've got people down now to the transfer station, getting them names and stuff.
Well, we can do that.
But at the next meeting, the board will be able to actually make the vote, this isn't on the agenda tonight, but since, since Donnie was here, I thought it would be a good, yeah, time to think about it.
Okay. Can we just?
Did they, now that you're being close twenty-four seven?
I'm just, I'm just. Remember that drive? Usually. June. For, we're gonna kick that back the first year. Exactly.
Back in, or they're gonna wait till summer?
I honestly can't tell you, 'cause I don't think it's been around the forefront, but one thing that had been done that maybe you weren't aware of, when it came to the membership drive, when things were shaky.
It's like a hundred, right?
The, the, that money was set aside in a separate fund, should something had completely defunct, the people would've got their money back, and I think they, you know, typically that wouldn't have been fair to take that and not, but I, I don't know a hundred percent, but I think their goal is to do that, but sometimes, I think they, from a financial and business sense, have to look at if it makes sense. You know, 'cause sometimes, are you, are you, your frequent flyers are just use that, many people use that as a donation, that which they're very appreciative, you know, and you hope you never have to use the service, but there is some balance in a business sense, is it costing you for what it does to do it versus your revenue? I don't know.
To me, to me, it's a worthwhile thing.
Oh, definitely, I think it's the contact. So, what would you, so this is just bringing it up, would you need a formal written article for next meetings? No, that takes care of it.
No, no, I. We've got an article in there, in a placeholder, at this point.
Same language as last year.
Correct.
If we could.
Could he go to the town clerk and just get the article?
Get, get the, get the petition.
Put the petition.
Put it in the, and put it in the, in the town office, and if.
We'll see.
We'll run it around if we, if it gets to the point where we need it. That way, we're, we're staying, we're staying.
On policy.
On policy, but will help.
So, you're just confusing what that statement actually really means. Explain to me what that means in hard enough symbols.
Means get a petition.
Get a petition.
We'll get it filled out.
We'll help get the eighty.
We'll help you fill it out.
We'll help you get the eighty.
But put it in the town office, where, next to where the other ones are, that people see.
That makes sense.
If you, I'm not against that, I just, you know, we're gonna need help to get it done, If you, I'm not against that, I just, you know, we're gonna need help to get it done. I'm not lying about it. And it may not be as hard, I just, we brought it up, and time's getting tight, that's all.
Liberty Street.
Everyone supports the rescue squad.
If you find that's the best way to deal, and you guys will help us, we'll, we'll make sure it gets done.
We'll help you get it done, but we won't break precedent, but I.
I understand. That's a fair compromise, I have no problem. I just, we need to help. I mean, we just, there's more people in town that are actually on the spot, but it's not a huge number. I'm not gonna lie about it. So it's economics. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. We'll be there. We'll get there. Um, back to the.
Thanks, Don.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Now, I'll put my other hand, I'll work my way around the room.
Fire department.
Excuse me.
Okay, you work out for, I'll stay in the back.
Just keep bending your camera.
I'll stay in the back.
Oh, we're out of time.
I'll be the assistant.
Okay, fire department, we are starting with fire fighting department. Stop me if anything jumps out at anyone. I'm not seeing anything, I'm not hearing anything.
They all look pretty good.
Well, I'm, we're involved with.
The medical expenses at the Hep B.
Forty-five, ten anyway.
Hep B and fit testing.
Just based on new members and test.
Yeah, and actually, the Hep B is kind of, over time, should be sliding away with the new members, because it's now required for school. But we.
Really? Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so that will, you know, attrition will become, you know, won't be something you have to pick up, but the fit testing will always be there. And I'm sure down the road, it'll be more than that. But that's where we're at at this point.
So anything on fire department? Okay, firefighting, fire department training? There's some numbers that are down, these reflect actual usage, I'm assuming.
Yep, and, and all of these cuts came from my office.
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a copy? Jim's got a copy.
Yep.
Okay.
So, yeah, these are all, it's, some of them, so for under fire department training, you see for the last three years, under operating supplies, it wasn't used at all. So we just, we left it at a hundred, but I mean, if there's not going to be any use at all, it's hard to justify, for me.
Yep.
So that's what all this is driven by, is just actual usage.
The, the one that stuck out to me a little bit was on the educational supplies. Joe cut me four hundred bucks on that. I'm assuming, based on the two thousand nineteen, the lack of usage, there was a, a little bit of a blip in the radar there. My, so, the safety officer, who was my former chief, who was in charge of our public fire education program, through the change of employment, wasn't able to do that anymore. At the same time, there was a change in the administration. The school, or at least in the, in the, I believe the health teacher, whoever was, was heading up the fire education from the school end. So that connection got missed. This year, that money's already been spent. I have my captain, Mike Fravisher, has assumed that responsibility. And with Chief Proctor and the help of a couple of other of our members, we had a very successful education program at the graded school, at Roots and Wings, and a couple of daycares.
What, what did you spend?
Uh, I think it was eight hundred and forty bucks, Mike spent something, or whatever he had left in his budget. So there was a lot of materials that was disseminated there. And it's also stuff that we do, holo mean. When they used to do national night out, we do national night out. Any chance that we have to interact with the kids, we have material available. And so that's, that's where that money went, and that's the explanation for why there was a deep, where there was no money spent in that last year.
Let's add two hundred dollars back to it, you know.
This year, they did spend almost nine hundred.
Let's, let's, let's do this, let's put at least two hundred dollars back into it. Would that help, Jim?
Sure, absolutely. Because it's, you know, that's money that I think is well spent, because we, you know.
Yeah, I'm afraid it's going back up to the phone.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with nine hundred dollars on that quite, quite frankly. It was because of lack of, you got good as what I want, didn't get used, where it sounds like.
Okay, so we're gonna go back to the original nine?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Keep an eye on it, see what it does next year. Okay. Any other questions? You seem, dues of me seem pretty much close to what you used. That's good.
So that's a hard one to, to figure, because that includes our Rutland County dues and our Washington County dues, which are stable. But the rest of that is funds for regional fire schools, seminars, et cetera. And the number of those provided and the number of members that are able to attend varies. So there are some years here that that's spent. And again, the, the number of members you have to begin with drives some of this too. And that was on a downswing and maybe now on a little bit of an upswing. So we do have one member now who's in a firefighter one. I've got a couple of members who would be looking forward to doing that next fall, and the next round of firefighter one, firefighter two. So that's kind of, that number can go up and down. And so what we have in there is to say, everything that I submitted has a breakdown on that. And some of that comes to fruition, some of it does not by the end of the year. But that's, that's what that number is all about. The breakdown I've got on that, my request is your, just to, so you know, is eight registrations at a regional school, a hundred and twenty dollars, six seminar registrations at sixty. We've been to several really good ones in the last few years. We went to one in St. Mike's on hoarder fires. It was an eight-hour session that was phenomenal. Our county dues for Rutland, Washington County, there's money in there for mileage for a firefighter one. We do pay the mileage for big. And generally, that's at Pittsburgh. This particular year, we got Fortunate Castle, they got selected to host the firefighter one. So we've got one member that's, that's, that's taking that now. It doesn't have that, that long drive, which is a good thing. And our firefighters association membership, which is.
What's your pleasure, folks?
Nine hundred back on the.
I don't know, I'd, I'd.
I got, based on past usage, I think we tried eighteen hundred, but.
I, I kind of agree, just, just to see.
If it runs, it runs, we need more.
If they start trending, we'll be able to stay.
Exactly.
Yep.
And we can always find money for training.
Yeah. That's one thing that, that Joe and I are both on the same page about. He hit me up very early on in his tenure, is he wants to see, he wants to see training money spent. And we've been trying to accommodate him on that, because we want to see it spent too.
Let's see where it goes there. And any other questions on that? Then we'll move down to communications.
What's going on with dispatching services? And we went from fifty-six fifty actual and.
Yeah, that was a billing issue on Washington County's end. They bill semi-annually, and we've got one six-month bill. And they dropped the football on the billing cycle for, for the next six months, so we had to pick that up the following year. So that's what that spike was. The total was, was still correct, it was just the way it was distributed. So that was kind of, went into fund balance and came out of fund balance and was a wash. But that's a two hundred, I think we're in a five-year agreement, we do five-year agreements with WashCo, and I believe it's a two hundred dollar a year increase. So it's, it's far and away the best bang for the buck we've ever done on that communications front. Because you listen to WashCo, you listen to State, and they've been doing it for forty years longer, so they've got it together.
Other questions on communications?
The only thing I have there, and again, I think this was a usage-driven thing, was our repair and maintenance supplies item. Joe chopped me down to a hundred bucks, the problem there. And this may be something that in the past things.
Two thousand?
Had gone out to the wrong, had gone out the wrong line.
Oh, repair and maintenance.
Right, repair and maintenance supplies, the first twenty-two. What I'm using that for is radio batteries. And just, for example, we had an incident last month, we had a mutual aid at Pauling, and my ETA, my brush truck responded, and my portables were dead, because they die if you let them sit. So the plan is, we picked up another, a second bank charger. There's a bank charger in the ER. And I want to get all my portables with a separate set of batteries. So there's always a battery, a charger, and then at worst-case scenario, every month, we flop them out. Have a battery number one and number two, and on odd months, number one goes in, on even months, number two goes in, to keep that, to keep that up. Because they do have a finite body. But the technology is better. And the chargers. The other thing is the charger we have in, in, in the ER has two slots for low-band radio. Well, as of two weeks ago, low-band went away. So I've got two replacement cups coming for that. So they'll be changed over to our high-band, so all the radios in that truck will have a backup battery. And the bank charger in the firehouse will cover all the radios in the other two trucks. So the idea is, is to have two sets of batteries for all of us.
What's that gonna cost?
Uh, those batteries are about seventy bucks a piece. So I had budgeted, I had budgeted six seventy for that line. I had four hundred and twenty dollars for, for six high-band batteries, and twenty-five bucks a piece for ten pager batteries. Because that's another item, when we run low on them, we buy them. They again have a finite life, and they're rotated through, everybody's got a battery in a spare. Somebody will say to me, here's batteries, and hold the charge, so we chuck it into another one.
Aren't we in big?
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't that, batteries and stuff come out of machine and the equipment?
Um, I just consider those to be more of a disposable item, as opposed to a, um, a piece of hardware, like a radio itself would come out of equipment. But just to kind of keep those isolated, because they are consumable. When they don't hold the charge anymore, and they need to be replaced. Whereas the radio itself is, is a little bit, has more of a longevity.
Well, it certainly is a safety factor. I would say that.
My thing is, put it at, put it at four fifty or something.
Go back, or, 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 right back to the five fifty, whatever.
Restate to four fifty, and that.
And put it back to five fifty. I just.
Five fifty, put another four fifteen in it?
Okay.
No.
Is that what you're saying?
No, put it back to five fifty where it was before.
Just level funding.
Just level funding, yeah.
That's good.
Okay.
Anything else on that line, or that, what number was that about?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay. Forty-five, forty, twenty-two.
That's the only thing I had on that.
Okay, moving on. Uh, fire department equipment.
The only thing I have to touch on here, and this is kind of an important one, under eighty-three in machinery and equipment, okay, I, uh, let me get my sheet here. The sub middle on that was seven thousand. Once Joe agreed, that's fine. But there is a bit of a proviso there. I had a note on my sheet that says, this is assuming a nine thousand dollar, well, I was talking about reserve, and Joe also had brought up the idea of a capital budget. I'm looking to somewhere have funding for three sets of turnout gear a year, which is three thousand bucks a set. And we've had this discussion for several years now, where that should come from. Some years, we've put it in operations. Some years, it's come out of reserve. When we first started the budget process, Joe proposed the idea of a capital budget and stuck the nine thousand dollars in the capital budget. And I said, that's where it belongs. And the seven thousand dollar figure here is fine, as long as that gear money is coming from somewhere. I mean, that's not included in this, because we were talking capital budget. So when that comes up for discussion, or whatever was going to happen with that, that needs to be rotated.
Is this gonna cause us to be short, Jim, going down to seven thousand?
Not, as far as, as far as miscellaneous equipment, you know, replacements of stuff, additions of stuff, I think, you know, I don't think that's a problem. Stuff's expensive, but it's not stuff you need very often. One thing I can think off the top of my head, we've got an incoming gate bell on my, my ETA, which is damn near frozen with age. And that's probably going to be a twelve to fifteen hundred dollar fixture to replace, but it's something we'll need to do. But that's not something that you buy antenna, so that's not a problem. The big thing is structural gear, because that's, for your interior people, it's gotta be ten years. And I know in the past, we've talked, and it's, 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 not only is it a major liability, but it's a major safety issue. And keeping our gear current is, is, is a vital thing to do. So that is the point that I'm stressing, as far as where that funding is coming from. And going forward, when you look at your capital budget, I know it's gotta be included in there.
Have you got that figured in capital budget?
It's, so there's a fire truck, money going into the reserve for fire equipment this year, and then the nine thousand dollars for next year actually starts rolling into it. So, yes, I guess.
So it changes, yes, we have nine thousand. Do we need the full seven thousand here, because you probably got what you think?
No.
No, no, no. The gear is not included.
Just asking.
Right, it's not included in that seven thousand figure.
Okay, it's not even, it's not.
Because Joe has got it in the capital fund, and which is, I fully support. That's where it belongs. It's a capital item, it's expensive, and it's got a lifespan. So it fits the definition of capital item.
Looks like it was written that.
Didn't, you know. Did you buy a bunch of turnout gear in one year, just like, like air bottles?
Air bottles, we bought a bunch of air bottles that were, that were, we had a bunch that were expired. Air bottles are fifteen-year service.
And we got slammed.
And we got, so we had seven replaced, we replaced seven. This year, I had one to replace, next year, I have one to replace. Hopefully, next year, we'll have our ducks in a row. Donnie and I went to a seminar a couple of weeks back on the AFG grant program. And they, oh, actually, that opened, I think it was opening on the second, so we're not gonna catch it this round, because we got a lot of homework to do to get ready for it. But we know what we need to do now, and we know how, how to go about answering their questions to give us the maximum points to get, because the way those grants work, you go, your application's computer scored. If your computer score is high enough, it goes to the next step, which is peer review. And it gets passed to a committee of five firefighters, and they look at it. The trick is to get it to peer review. If you've got air packs that are over two generations old, and ours are like three to four generations old, you rock it up if you do your grant right. And the, the plan is to catch the next round of AFG grants. And I talked to Joe, he's got a SAM account, this is all, goes all through the SAM account, the way you, with your, your application. To get, we gotta have our run information, we gotta have our training information, our demographics, our budget, all our information together, and hit that, and replace all of our SCBA with state-of-the-art SCBA. New spare bottles, new compressor, it would cost you five percent. So if you're talking a hundred and, probably, well, Pauling just got a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in last grant. So it would cost them, you know, seven, you know, sixty-five hundred. So that's the plan on, that's the plan going forward on SCBA.
I just remembered, I thought we did a big slug on the turnout here as well.
Yeah, actually, turnout.
When nine eleven, fallout money.
Post-nine eleven, when AFG grants were going like crazy, we got, we got into two rounds of grants. Got probably fourteen or sixteen sets of gear off to two grants. Problem is, that was, you know, two thousand and three, two thousand and four, and that stuff is all gone by the wayside, because it's over ten years old.
That's what I was getting at. Do you have, did you not have to replace some in the last couple of years?
Yeah, we replaced them. What we've done, in the same time, our membership has gone down. Our interior firefighters' numbers have gone down. So we were able to replace some of those with fewer sets. So we weren't spending, we weren't spending, you know, anywhere near as much money. But we've always had the discussion where that money was coming from. One year, we pulled that out of reserve.
Yeah.
You know, and the problem with that is, you're not too far away from replacing a truck. And you're not gonna have, you know, if you keep spending the money on gear, you're not gonna have the money for the down payment on the truck. So, you know, you gotta look at the big picture. But the idea of doing that through a capital budget and putting everything in there to even it out is something that's, that's, that's just trying to.
Questions, comments? No? We okay on that then? As we're, we're on, we're on the right path.
And you've got a note, probably needing your capital.
Okay, um, for spire warden, that's.
I didn't get a sheet for that, so I just zeroed it out. And that's a simple answer for.
I, I will tell you with that, it's been, I think historically, what, two hundred bucks? And you probably didn't have a sheet on it, because you don't, you're in between forest fire wardens.
Oh, and that's why.
Right. But I will tell you, what we've done with that money is that we just, just got it in a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the state forest and parks department has a fifty-fifty match on wildland firefighting gear. And it fires off the middle of November, so you can get your gear in time for the next season. So anything that goes in that line item gets leveraged dollar for dollar. This particular year, I think we ordered four headlamps for the officers, for their wildland helmets, and I think sixteen pair of wildland gloves. One year, we got, well, we've got a lot of one-inch hose, forestry hose through that program. We've gotten fittings, nozzles, pack pumps, pack pump ladders. While last year, we got wildland helmets, we were able to issue those to the members. They don't have wildland helmets with goggles, and. all have wildland helmets with goggles and neck shields. And it's, I said, it's fifty cents on the dollar, so it's, it's one of the most worthwhile grant programs I've run across. And it's really easy, you just pay, send them a check for your half, and Lars Lund shows up with your order. So whatever you want to fund that out, you can count on that money being dollars.
I'd like to see it go back to two hundred. That's your pleasure.
I'm not sure what you want.
Back up? Hearing no arguments?
For now.
For now?
For now. There is. Bring your four hundred.
Okay. These nine is memberships. Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you both.
Not that I'm kicking you out.
Thank you very much, but have a good night. Two to the heart when you go back.
We're not budgeting ready promotion as high as we used to, we can see.
We're not budgeting it at all.
No.
Not at all.
Thank you very much, but that was, no, didn't do us much good.
Self-explanatory, I mean.
Yeah, we didn't get any real news out of that.
No bang from, no bang from the bucket.
I was at the website that never got off the ground.
Well, other towns were getting their promotion, but.
Yeah, Fairhaven didn't. West to Burjai, once again.
Yeah.
So that's level, we're going to keep that as is, no? Okay. That's what we have.
I actually have two, uh, two changes that came through between last meeting and this meeting. On page three, you'll see a highlighted line under technology. That's our Nemets contract.
Oh, wow.
They've raised our contract by five thousand dollars. They just, it's been flat for years, and then all of a sudden they're like, bam, here's five thousand dollars.
There's nothing like being tied to the stick, right?
Yeah.
Where, where is it?
Page three, under technology, we know school buildings technology.
Oh, okay.
It's.
And then we, everything we operate.
Okay.
Everything we operate is off.
So I, I don't, I, yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm.
We, that was hurting. And then on page nine.
And on?
The, the chair of the board jinxed me. Uh, we, we flat funded the county tax, and then our county tax went up one thousand two hundred dollars.
How did I do that? I'm innocent.
You're proving guilty ground, reasonable doubt.
For that one, the explanation was the sheriff wants to add a solar panel system to their building, so they, doesn't, doesn't that money? I called the complaint as much as they would listen.
Hmm, not much, huh?
Yeah.
Is this one on here too?
That's Jenny's section.
Being in the county, none. None, except we're like constitution.
Isn't that some of that the judges' salaries?
That's the constitution, we have to pay it because we're in the county.
Did you also do something on ten fifteen? Page ten, HRA fees.
Yeah, that's, I highlighted that, but I, it's, yeah, Jenny is going to come and talk about that at the next meet.
Okay.
I, I shouldn't have highlighted that, I was, it was swirling around in my mind.
Slip of the highlighter.
The parade committee, are you going to be at the meeting next time?
Oh, I hope to be, yeah.
Last night they asked about, they just wanted to know if the town crew was going to put up the stage and get the signs out and stuff like that.
Yeah, we'll be responsible, just like we have been, put up the, put up the stage and.
There was a discussion, Jay, about your condition of the stage, too.
Yeah, there's, yeah, the condition of the stage, they said they need some plywood on it or something, but.
It's time to research, looking at new decking. Those are the little platform table things. Helm almost did a header.
Yeah.
The other day, the last week, I mean, he.
Well, that's what he mentioned last night, that it was.
He really did, I mean.
He said it, it's getting pretty bad, they need some repair.
And another thing that was mentioned, the handicap accessibility to get up on the stage.
Well, that wasn't mentioned last night.
No, but today it was.
Well, I mean, it, it's probably necessary, if we, if we had, like we did last year, we had, we had a wounded vet.
Right.
Um, speaking, and he had a hell of a time getting around, that's probably something we should think about.
And your thing on the water meters, I think, is off because my water bills are unbelievable. My, my apartment also up a hundred and fifty dollars for the last quarter.
Take a look.
And the time before that, it had gone up fifty bucks, so I'm up two hundred dollars in the last two quarters. So, I don't think I have a faulty meter, or, and I've checked it everybody, he said there was no leak, so.
We'll check, bring, check it out.
Just wanted to bring that to their attention.
The one downtown, the building downtown?
No, the one up beside my house.
Okay.
Um, is the new truck in?
No. Uh, you know, let me check, I didn't get a text. Sam said he was going to get in touch with the dealership to see when it was coming in. If I can figure out my.
Probably got left fingers on your right hand.
No, he didn't send me. So he said he was going to talk to him, but maybe he didn't get in touch.
Okay.
We're looking at salaries in all of our budgets. Does that salary include the insurance with that or without it?
Without. Jenny will come in and talk benefits at the next meeting, and that's where your insurance comes from.
I won't be here next meeting.
Okay.
Are we going to have a salary to look at while she's talking about?
We're going to have it piped in?
I don't think so.
Like what?
Well, she's what she's talking about, you know, trying to have something to follow along.
Like the budget?
Yeah.
I'm sure Jenny will be well.
Well versed, but.
Yeah. She'll be well prepared.
Yeah, she may.
Thing else?
Sure.
We going to talk about that zoning change?
I am, at some point, but go ahead.
What the planning commission did to the apartments downstairs?
That, so that's got to work itself through the process, they have to have hearings, um, and then they'll send the formal change to the board of selectmen, and then the board of selectmen will have a hearing, board of selectmen will make changes presumably, and then have a hearing. And, and at, at the end of the day, it's the board of selectmen's decision, how, how to adjust that.
I all understand. We sat right here and discussed it, and discussed it, and discussed it with them, till we didn't want the apartments in any turn around and do it. Actually, they voted not to do it.
I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was clear to you. So, but.
It's their, it's their decision, right?
It is, and to the.
What? It's their decision, we, we can tell what we.
I think we can stop it, whereas we still are the people that are in charge here. I mean, it, it doesn't make any sense to take half the building on Main Street and put an apartment in it. You're not going to get any business in that front apartment, that front apartment, it's not big enough.
But you're likely to end up with, uh, and if they go this part.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just.
But they go this part, before you're done, they'll be using the other part because they can't run.
Right.
And then they want an apartment in there.
Well, yeah, I just don't think it's a good idea in general to, to start that, talk, talk about setting a precedent.
Yeah.
Well, that was going to be my question, um, me, do we need to send a, do we need to send a letter to them?
No, at this point, Bob, it's, they, they did their thing, they'll, they'll follow their process, and then it will land on this table sometime, I imagine, January, February.
Would you, um, keep us aware of when they're, when they're going to have hearings?
When the meetings are.
Yeah. Should probably say something to them, they're not surprised by it again.
Right. Like to try putting a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit back on like we have before that was taken off by petition vote, put it back on ballot?
Uh, yeah, if the board wants, we can, the board can vote to do that. To put the, yeah, on the next, or next, uh, warning.
We could put up a thousand signs around here. If they're not enforced, what good is it?
Well, nothing like trying.
Well, our parking signs down here, I came through here today, there were seven cars parked where it says no parking. And they're there all day.
Right here at the school?
Yeah, right at the school. Every day it's like that, and they just drive by, you know?
We do have parking tickets, they could put them down there.
Get out the car first. And the trucks are still running down Forest Street, so.
Yeah, we had Miles Lumber Company going down there today, right, right through to Lockman Street.
Had a truck come out today.
R K Miles.
Had three cars in the back and towed one.
We do pass that on.
That's, I will.
Nothing.
Um, John got the, the planning commission, and Jay got the data for the higher water bills. I'd like to see, you know, if we could come up with a, just to see if there is a percentage increase and what it would, what it amounts to, and if it's consistent. I mean, you have to, we don't have all, all the meters in, I know that, but we have the ones that are in, if there's a reading before and after, and see if that we are, I mean, we may be just catching what we should be catching, but, um.
What's frustrating, well, from this side, what's frustrating, because paying extra is a pain in the butt. Um, the bill that we're in now was the summer bill, so it's, in the summer, people tend to do, use more, use more. So when they move into winter, they're like, why is my bill so high? It's like, well, because of the summertime, you're washing your car, you know.
Not, not at my place.
And, well, I'm not saying it with your place, Jay, but.
Can you compare quarter to quarter?
And that's what we typically do, compare quarter to quarter to show.
You said that my bill is down, and it was, but my usage is down too.
You have to correct for days as well.
Correct for?
For days.
Yeah, because it's not always thirty or sixty or ninety, it's, it might be a few extra.
I, I just think we should be on top of, people noticing it, and obviously Jay's really noticing it. Uh, so, but the people have asked me, and I said, it's, it's something that we can look at and without a lot of work.
No, it's not, and we've been staying on top of it, because we knew this would.
Um, we're talking about, uh, we'll talk about this more next time, but, um, I'm, I'm not getting, I'm not real thrilled about the, the one percent tax, I don't like that idea, and I've heard some rumblings about that as well, but we can talk about that next. The other thing is, uh, we, we're talking about the downtown parking area and doing that, and the last, and last time, last time we talked about it, you, you broke it off and, and didn't want to pave to save some money.
Didn't want to pave?
The, the, if we do the parking area, the free parking area, if we do that, I think you said you were taking, you were talking about taking the paving out of that.
We took the, instead of recoding the whole, um, yeah, just because the grant would only support three hundred thousand. If, if we were paved, it would have added an extra something, seventy-six to eighty thousand, whatever the number was.
We're going to have to pay for it either way.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking that maybe that's, that's a function, maybe that's where the fund balance, we could, we could take, get an estimate of what that's going to cost and use the fund balance money, part of the fund balance, I mean, obviously we don't want to use it all. And I know she got another, another grab at the, at the fund balance as well in there, but I, I, just as another thought process, um, to do that, and if not this budget year, let's keep an eye on it for when we actually do the project. I don't, we're not, I don't know, are we going to be able to get that, that project in next, next year? I didn't think so.
No, they're, they're pretty fussy, it's going to be, they say at least three years to construction.
Yeah, okay.
So.
So I, I'd like to keep an eye on that, I really, it doesn't make any sense to make that new and not repave. I mean, it, it, it doesn't, it, if you're going to make something look like it's supposed to, you know, potholes and, and.
Well, that's another, you got some holes on the, on the Adam Street Hill, and you got some holes in the.
So, okay, that's not going to happen this time, so.
No, no, but I'm just saying, you got potholes there, especially on, up on Airport Road, halfway through the tunnel, there's a break across there, and it's quite a, quite a hole there.
Who the hell's talking about Airport Road?
I just did.
I know, but why?
He's coming tomorrow to fix us.
Okay.
That's on the list.
Anyways, one, one last thing, we, we made the American Mag, American Road Magazine, Fairhaven, for electing a goat.
Perfect, wow.
Oh, that's, do we have to re-elect a goat every year?
Yeah.
We're doing a few flood races.
So we got a goat elected Vermont mayor, Fairhaven, Vermont, so we got a little five paragraph, six paragraph thing in there, in there.
Well, that's nice, that's good, that's nice, it drops some interest doing that.
Yeah, so I mean, it, it did catch, I heard it, uh, on a, American, there's a National Public Radio Show that does American, it's, it's money, it's a money, um, I can't think what it's called, but it's, it's about funding and sources. It was a symposium in London, England, and one of the speakers, one of the speakers said, uh, said that, well, you know, I don't know how they got onto the subject, but at some point, well, they elected a goat for mayor in Fairhaven, Vermont, so, so needless to say, that, that got our name out there.
Well, well, maybe a little bit of recognition, you know.
All right, so, just so you know, uh, checkbook.
Checkbook is, uh.
I'm sorry, that's actually B.
Yeah, I'm just going to double check that I got through. Yeah, checkbook's one million, one hundred ninety-two thousand and two hundred six dollars and twenty-three cents.
I will ask this question because I ask this all the time, is that covered?
Oh, yeah.
I, you know, I, it scares the hell out of me.
Is it insured?
Oh, yeah, no, you're okay.
Oh, is it, is the whole?
Is it enough, is it spread out enough?
Yeah, it's spread out enough, we're not going to lose that money. If the bank crashed tomorrow, we would, you're insured, yeah.
It, we had it right out.
Charlie Kelton ruined some people.
Yeah, okay. It, uh, okay, it ruined Benson, it didn't do Benson any good. Okay, sorry.
Now you make them worry.
Maybe we was asking.
Yeah, we'll just check.
Yeah, I, please, every once in a while it's worth asking.
It, yeah.
Motion to pay the general fund warrant, one hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to pay the payroll warrant, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred seven dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Do we have an executive session or?
We do, uh, other personnel today.
Okay.
Most of them are under executive session under one GSA three thirteen eight.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?